Welcome to this evening. If you haven't already, please silence yourself. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five, six P M. Anamosa Library and Learning Center, one point zero roll call.
From?
Here.
Haysman?
Yeah.
Wymer?
Here.
Dan Smith?
Here.
Tom Bird?
Here.
Five council members are present in chambers. Uh, there are no council members attending remotely. Two point zero, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Three point zero, agenda review and approve. There are three agenda items listed. I will read all three, after which council makes a motion that includes consent, which will bring all three up for discussion in a single vote. Or council can make a motion on any of the individual items. Item A, minutes from August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, regular session. Item B, current bills. Item C, noise street closure permit application.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kane. Also, you may openly discuss all three of the items.
I have a question for you, Steve. We had pumps pulled from M D P, is that right?
Yes.
We couldn't have done that ourselves.
Not that live station. That one's too deep. I don't feel s-. I don't trust myself pulling those pumps. Any of the rest of them, I can, just not the empty one. It's the uh, uh, there's brackets that hold rails in that have to be replaced and they haven't got them replaced yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Public comment? Haley, would you conduct the roll vote?
Haysman?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Consent. Motion approved. Four point zero, council action items. Four point one, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty six, to set the wage for the position of full-time streets department assistant superintendent for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kane, second by Brooke. Council discussion. Public comment? Haley, please.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Haysman?
Yes.
Motion to approve position carries. Four point two, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty seven, to set the wage of a part-time janitor for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Todd. Council discussion. Public comment? Haley, please.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Haysman?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Motion to approve wage for part-time janitor carries. Four point three, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty eight, to set the wage for the position of a full-time streets department labor for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Council discussion.
Shane, will you be full staffed after this, Harry?
Yes.
How many guys would you have then?
Name, we're on street superintendent, I will have five.
Including yourself?
Yes.
Thanks. Also, anything else? Do you have any public comment? Haley, please conduct the roll vote.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Haysman?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Motion to approve wage for position of full-time streets department labor carries. Four point four, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty nine, to set the wage for the position of a full-time police officer for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kane, second by Rich. Council discussion.
These are set by contract, correct?
That's correct. Um, the only variation of that would be the, uh, this particular resolution. Um, Mr. Williams has quite a bit of experience, so he's allowed to come in at a certain, uh, higher amount if authorized.
And separate, but is this is the contract of this year?
It is. We'll be negotiating here shortly for the upcoming probably three years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Public comment? Haley, please.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Haysman?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Motion to approve wage for position of full-time police officer carries. Four point five, resolution twenty twenty five dash six zero, to set the wage for the position of full-time police officer for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kane, second by Brooke. Council discussion. Public comment? Haley?
Wymer?
Yes.
Haysman?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve wage for the position of full-time police officer carries. Four point six, resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty one, to set the public hearing for the water treatment plant aerator replacement project.
I move to set a public hearing for September twenty second, twenty twenty five at six P M. At the Anamosa Library and Learning Center.
I'll say.
Motion by Rich, second by Dan. Council discussion. Public comment? Haley?
Haysman?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Motion to approve, date set for public hearing carries. Four point seven, review and approve twenty eight E agreement for general law enforcement services between the Jones County Sheriff and the City of Anamosa Sheriff Greg Robert. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you very much. Uh, Greg Robert Jones, Kenny Sheriff, I appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you today. So you should all have a twenty eight E that was sent out in your packet. Um, that contract is actually for the most part similar to other contracts that the sheriff's office has with other communities. We contract law enforcement services for six other cities within Jones County that don't have their own police department. And so what I did is simply made some tweaks to that particular one, um, to fit this situation. The, the tweaks just in general were, um, the other towns, um, there's some equipment requirements, spacing requirements that obviously in this case, uh, do not apply. So we have been providing police protection when I say we obviously the sheriff's office for about three weeks. We kind of expected this to happen, um, as we were kind of watching the staffing levels with the police department. We knew that that time would come. And so we'd kind of prepared our staff that, uh, that would likely occur. So when we were approached, the chief deputy sent out an email to our patrol staff that said when we have multiple deputies out, which is most of a twenty-four hour shift, that somebody was to remain in the Anamosa area and we would go ahead and take the calls and do whatever follow-up necessary to make sure that the citizens in the community had police protection. And so we've been doing that for almost three weeks now. We've been covering at times up to twelve hours a day, so it is a significant amount of time that we have been covering. There are certain, uh, days now that we're covering maybe six hours a day, but it's still a significant time for a smaller department. Myself, the dispatch supervisor, um, met with the office manager for the police department and we set up a process. One of the things that we kind of didn't anticipate was when a call comes into Anamosa and it's assigned to, to an Anamosa officer, um, there's certain reporting that's required of the F B I. And so when it was getting assigned to us, it was kind of creating some reporting issues. And so dispatch worked out a process where it's a generic assignment to the Anamosa. Uh, it's not assigned an officer because when it was getting assigned to a deputy, it was automatically going to our department and it created problems for her when she was trying to file the monthly neighbors report. So we have put a, a process in place that still shows it to be an Anamosa call. It would show up as your data, um, even though it would initially be covered by us. And so I had in there a rate of thirty-five dollars an hour. That is not making money for our agency. Um, we'd still be losing at that hourly rate of thirty-five dollars, but it is something to at least help um, myself cover the cost. I did have in there, um, that would jump to fifty dollars, um, if we covered more than forty hours. The idea behind that is there has been some double covering going on amongst the police department. The city administrator has kind of addressed some of those issues. But there, I want there to be an incentive, uh, for Anamosa to kind of cover their own hours. And if they cannot, and that gets over that certain forty-hour threshold, then that would go to fifty. Um, and so that way it kind of helps us cover our cost. And so that was the reason that was put in there. We would not charge you. This is just keeping track of the hours that we're covering. Um, it would not cost you for any adv- in additional investigative hours. So anything that we're going to follow up on, we would not additionally bill you. That is something that would be covered by our staff and our payroll. We've talked about sex crimes. If we have to, if we have a sex abuse investigation, have to go to C P C. I have the staff to handle that. I also have the staff that, um, they are not scheduled to be able to take care of that. And so you would not be charged. That's something that we would take care of. If additional resources are needed, I don't believe right now that you have anyone that lives in town. We call out our staff. We would handle any situation that's going on in town, out of county in order to make that happen. That would be no additional cost to you. And, um, one thing that I wanted to kind of touch on here while I have the opportunity. One thing that if you do agree, um, to the twenty eight E that I would agree to provide you a service to is obviously there was no secret about some of the tensions going on between other law enforcement and the Anamosa Police Department on calls for service. And so what I want to say is I'm going to give you some information. Um, in two thousand sixteen, when we went to one database of everybody sharing all of our information, there was a twenty-eight E that was created at that time to deal with open records request. The state language for open records request essentially says that the, um, holder of the information is the one responsible for its release. And since all of the data that we all put into is housed on sheriff's office servers, then that would make us basically holder of that record and responsible. So when I get an open records request, if it's an animal ceremony case, I touch base with their chief just to say, hey, I've got this. I have a time limit. Um, is there things that you want redacted out of there that we can maybe protect? Otherwise I'll end up in, uh, releasing that information because I am required to do that by law. The reason I bring that up is every month with my six contract towns that I talked to you about, I provide them a detailed report of all the calls that go on within their city. Um, that's one thing about calls for service numbers that I have specifically talked about some, uh, with you is what does a number mean? Um, if your calls for service went up in one month by thirty, what does that mean? Um, is that something you should be alarmed at? Does that mean there's thirty people that didn't mow their grass? Or does that mean you've had thirty residential burglaries that you need to be concerned about? And so for my cities, I have the fourteen years I've been sheriff. I have provided them a detailed report of all the calls that I've taken in their community for that month. And it takes me about probably four or five hours at the beginning of every month for me to do that, but I think it's important information for you as the elected official to know what's going on in your communities. So I have taken the opportunity to do that for you this month. Um, if you do contract until you get a chief of police, I will continue to do this for you. This is something that we had created because I was already doing it prior to two thousand sixteen. And so when we went to this, um, I had them create me a document that would allow me to continue that practice because I knew the mayors and city council members of my time with their towns would certainly want that information. And so this is what I
Thank you.
This information is all open records request. Um, each year I attend open, I attend open records classes. My last one was an eight-hour class about a month ago. It was extremely painful to sit through. Um, but what you'll see in there is you may see some blackout, which I'll call redactions. There are certain things by Iowa law that I should not release and shall not release. Um, a shall not release would be such things as a juvenile name. Um, such as a sex assault investigation. And so when those come in, I generally will show that Anamosa's had a sex assault investigation. Um, I do think there's one included in there, but I will black out the details involved in that. Um, one thing that officers sometimes get confused about is, um, if there was a active investigation. Um, uh, under chapter twenty-two open records, it says I doesn't, don't have to re- I don't have to reveal the details, but there's still information such as the, um, when, where, sometimes who, um, that we are still required to give up. We just don't have to give up details. And so in that report that I have generated for you, you will see what the actual call is. You'll see what the actual call type is. And then there's usually a one or two sentence that kind of goes in that kind of details what the information on that call. Everything in there is public record, like I said, so it's not a top secret thing that cannot be seen by the public. And so kind of as we move forward, I would encourage you as a city to kind of request this of your leader because I think you'll find that the information contained in those reports is very valuable for you to know what's going on in your community and also involving your police department. So with that being said, um, if you pass this, it goes in front of the uh, board of supervisors next Tuesday. At that point, we'll have covered for four weeks a month. And so that's why I'm kind of asking that you, um, just kind of help cover my costs. Like I said, we want to be good stewards. We want to continue to provide you uh, police protection. I'm not looking to get rich. I'm not looking to make a bunch of money on this. I just simply want the city to help out um, covering our cost. So at that point, I'll take any questions.
Is this, this is one officer, one deputy, and it's going to be ma- maybe a different deputy, but it's just one deputy that is going to be handling each day?
So it's, it's kind of whoever is out and about, um. So what they've been doing is they've kind of been trading off. If there's stuff going on in the town, somebody run down and take care of it. They'll come back and somebody, so they've just been kind of working with each other to cover it. We just have simply said, we just want somebody to stick around town. Um, so that way if, if a call comes in, we have somebody available to get there in a timely manner.
Well, I'll move to accept the twenty-eight E agreement.
I'll second.
She by Rich. We have multiple challenges, same to Brooke. Further discussion? Sheriff Robert, is it outlining, I don't have the twenty-eight agreement brought to me. That's, that's fine. Uh, is it outlining the, the hours of the, the day?
So we'll be, we have your schedule and so what we've kind of been doing is our staff, if the last Anamosa officer goes out, they know that they're taking, they're taking the calls. So we're just, whatever hours that you have somebody available, then this doesn't apply. The hours that you don't, we know that we are immediately going to be covering those hours and covering those calls, whatever those calls are.
When you say covering, do does that mean an officer will be stationed within the city limits?
Um, I'm not going to tell you a hundred percent certain, but that's always going to happen. Um, you're going to have incidents outside of town such as a car wreck that we were all out to, but um, hopefully somebody will be close to this area. We are pretty much double-covered, um, up till four A M. And so from four to six, if you don't have somebody out, we may only have one car out. So then one car is trying to balance here and there. And so if it gets into where we have too much going on, then we just call the next car out.
Within that twenty-eight E agreement, agreement, does it need to be identified, the hours within a twenty-four hour period that you will be up, providing in coverage?
The reason it's not that specific is there's some times that the sergeant's coming out at six in the morning and so we're only covering till six. There's other times that you don't have someone coming out till noon. And so we're covering that, um. If you have officers take off on vacation or that kind of stuff, it's varying so much. I don't know how we would do that. My other hope is, is as we, I kind of left language about getting out of this, but what we will plan on doing is being in communication with the city administrator who's been engaged in this. The mayor, if that needs be, if as your staffing levels increase and we kind of don't need, instead of just dissolving this contract, we'll just say, we'll just depend on him to say, you know what, we're good right now. Let's just wait and see. I do know there is a potential for other opportunities for other officers that we could be back in this situation again. I hope not for all of us. But that is something I don't want to be back here again in three months reinstating this. So we'll just keep the communication up of, hey, we're good for right now of, uh-oh, we need hours covered again.
I understand. Uh, so I guess a lot of this will depend on Jeremiah and Sergeant Brokaw to provide you with a schedule.
Sergeant Brokaw has been providing the schedule to the chief deputy. Um, and then there's also been communication with the city administrator.
I, again, I do understand that the, the time of coverage needs to be remained fluid because you're responsible, Colin, why? Uh, the, for some unfortunate reason, we do not have an officer on during the transportation of school age kids. Uh, the in and out of the facilities there, boarding buses and whatnot. It, it sure would be a warm feeling to know that someone is very close by.
Um, I have reached out to the school. Um, I've had communication with the school to feel free to reach out to us at any point, um, as far as, because you do have your S R O, but he can easily get overwhelmed. And so I've already had the conversation with the school that we will support whatever they have.
Appreciate that proactive approach. I think that's all I was looking for, Claire. Also, and public comment? Haley, please conduct a roll vote.
From?
Yes.
Haysman?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Motion to approve the twenty-eight E agreement with, uh, Jones County Sheriff's Department carries. Uh,
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. It's great.
Uh, sir. Greg, thank you for coming before and providing the opportunity for this. As far as publicly, obviously this is not a position situation the city wanted to be in. Uh, we wish we were not in, obviously as well. Uh, but it was unforeseeable. And it's going to be temporary. Uh, you know, we had a couple of agenda items earlier, uh, that were bringing two officers on, onboard the department. So hopefully that in itself is when they're up to full speed is enough to alleviate the, the stress that we are going to be putting on the, the sheriff's department. I just wanted to make that statement. Four point eight, review and approve purchase of replacement I N F well pump in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for the wastewater treatment plant, Steve Agnes.
Uh, Steve Agnes, utility superintendent, provided a letter with the quote there in front of you. Were your questions?
Steve, this would be a backup pump for the four you currently have, is that right?
Yes, it would. So that way if I have one, let's go down, then we can put it in. And then we always have four pumps available if needed. Not that we run all four at a time, but we'll always have a pump in the spot in the well.
The four pumps that we currently have, I know you said we have one that is a crane deming, which is the one you're recommending we purchase. Are the other three, the Ibaras then, or?
Two others, two others are Ivara and one is a, a Vaughn. So we kind of have a mix match at the moment. Um, I've had a lot of good recommendations about the crane. That's why I'm trying to switch to crane. We, I bought some Ibaras when the Vaughn started going, uh, out. And they were not lasting as long as I thought they needed to be. So it was time to look for something else.
So in here you say the life expectancy is longer. What's the difference? What's the difference in the life expectancies?
Um, I believe the Ivara pump was three to five years and the crane deming was five to seven.
With the letter Steve that you gave us, the crane deming one is a six to eight week process to get that. Ibaras four to eight weeks. Um, I realize this is a replacement pump at this point, but if the crane deming were to have some kind of problem that, uh, it would have to be replaced or repaired, is that period of replacement or repairs, the six to eight weeks as well, or is that?
If, if something has, usually, um, if you look like on the on the quote, usually been the, like at the top, it talks about the repair of the Ivara. And that, that is usually three to four weeks. And that's usually most pumps manufacturer picked it, you know, there's fifty to a hundred different pumps out there that you can buy. And it's most of them that are made in the United States, usually in that three to four weeks is the timeframe that it takes to get the parts from the factory and then for the guys to get them rebuilt. Cause it's a little bit of a process to rebuild them. But.
Even your memo to the city regarding failure in purchase. Uh, you spell out the, the sixty percent threshold of cost. Uh, you say that repair for the, the pump that had the failure is over just over eleven thousand though.
Yeah.
And indicating it'd be sixty percent of the cost of the new.
Correct.
Well, when you compare it to the pump of your choice,
Hmm.
takes it down to forty-five percent.
It, it is that way, yes. But, um, after having some lengthy conversations with Mississippi Valley Palm, they have been putting the crane damming out in the field, been using them in a lot of different places and having zero problems with them. And some of them have been put in, uh, one example was Parkview down by the Quad Cities and down by the Broad Cities and they were having to go there about every other week and pull any other manufacturer's pump. Clean it out because of rags and debris that have been put in through the inflow well. They put the crane demings in, then been there in three years to touch them. So to me, I understand it's a little more expensive. But, um, the Ivara pump that failed is approximately two and a half years old.
No warranty.
Uh, I believe it's a year warranty on the pumps. Pretty much most of manufacturers, I believe it's a year.
In this case, the Ivara or the crane, same thing, one year. It's eight thousand more for basically two years. As you said, the Ivara, three to five on its life and the, uh, the crane, damming, five, seven, we're looking at the difference of two years for eight thousand.
We have a, the crane deming that was purchased this past March.
Hmm.
And then there are two Ibaras that are currently being used. How old are those two?
The, the Ibaras are all in that. Uh, eighteen months to two and a half years. And we've already had one other one that had a seal fail that I had to have repaired.
And the odd?
The third one, the third one so far has been running with many issues.
How old is that?
It, the, all three of them are within eighteen months to two and a half years. That's how long they've been.
I misunderstood. Thank you.
Sorry.
So your backup pump remains in a backup position until it's needed on a temporary basis, or you have a failure and then you rotate it in?
Well, we will set this, when we get this pump, it'll get set in the building. When we have a failure, it'll get put right in the well and we'll be able to continue on with four pumps. The, the pumps right now are set up to cycle every morning. So if pump one was in lead and two and three, uh, it depends upon the flows. Uh, when we're running two pumps primarily, when, when it's a little drier like it has been the last week or so, we'll run two pumps primarily. Um, if it gets a little bit wet, wetter like we've been in the rain, it'll run three pumps at like seventy percent. And then, like I said, every morning at like seven or eight o'clock, it'll rotate. So if it was using one, two and three, it'll go to two, three and four. And then it'll go back to, then it'll be three, four and one. And so on and so forth. It'll just, it automatically rotates every morning. So all the pumps are getting approximately the same usage out of them. The ones that are in the wet well. And then we have a spare sitting. This will be a spare sitting there. So in case we have a problem, then we can pull it out, put it in right away.
How often are we using four pumps, Steve? Big rate events?
We can't use four pumps. Four pumps are too much. We'll flood the wastewater plant. Three is the max that Skoda will, uh, to run at one time.
Hey, a question for you.
Yes.
Only because I've ran into this in the past. I don't know. Uh, so when you have parts sitting in, in the shop like that, waiting to be installed, like your backup, just like you're saying? When do they actually start your warranty?
It starts when you, when you get the pump.
Right. So if it sits there for a year.
If it sits there for a year, then like, yeah, I understand.
Then if you have to rotate a pump in your backup, is it just temporary until you get the other one replaced and then switch?
We usually just put that pump in and let it run until we have a problem. And then the one they get repaired, it gets it back in the building.
It comes to that.
It becomes the, the spare.
So I don't pretend to know anything about pumps and how they work, but we have four that are currently running, but we can only run three at one time.
With capacity wise for the wastewater plant, when three pumps are running wide open, that's all the plant will take.
So how do we, how is it determined which three pumps are going to be working?
Because of the rotation every day.
Okay.
Cause it'll automatically rotate between the pumps.
Yeah.
Steve, with the new EQ basin, the tank.
Hmm.
Will you be able to run four pumps with that tank?
No.
Cause it will have a load on the plant?
No, that, that will have nothing, nothing to do that way. Because if, when we get to the point that the excess runs over the bypass pipe, we'll actually throttle, the Skoda system is going to throttle the three pumps down just a little bit. So that doesn't flood the plant. And then all of the extra water will then get pumped to the tank. For treatment later.
Never be able to use four pump?
No.
But we have four pumps here, one of them, right?
Yes, I would like a spare to sit there.
Over. With the one always being a spare, not necessarily this one, because when it's in use, it's remains in use. Thank you. Be more warranted to go with the the lower cost pump because of that reason.
How hard it is, how hard is it to switch these pumps out?
Basically, you gotta take the crane truck, go down, pull the pump up off with the chain, unwire the pump. And then rewire it back into the box, which is one of the things that I can't do.
Well, it just seems to me like for what you want to do, if you want the, the more expensive one, it would make sense to place that into production right away instead of having it just sit on a shelf.
I can sure do that.
Um, because like Brooke pointed out, if the warranty's starting the day you get it, we might as well be using it.
I, I can sure do that. That's not a big deal.
And then you could take the one that is no longer in and put that on the shelf as your backup.
Okay. Like, like I said.
I mean, that, that would make more sense.
I can sure do that. That's not a big deal.
But how, how reliable? I guess what, what's kind of the effective rate between the two different pumps? I mean, is one down or have issues? Say ten percent of the time and the other one is maybe down five percent or what's, what's the the difference there? Do, or do you know?
All I know from the Ibaras that we had switched to and started putting in, we've had some more seal failures and, and, uh, more expenses than I feel that we should, that I don't think the Ibaras are worth having anymore. It used to be a really good pump, but for whatever re, I've had more issues with these pumps than I, in my past experience than what I have before. I always thought they were a great pump, but for some reason these here are just, they're not living up to the quality like they used to be, in my opinion. What's that?
And we perform in maintenance?
There really is no maintenance. There's the, the only, the only, the only maintenance on a submersible pump is to pull it out, check the impeller, check the oil level. If it's, and see if it's milky. After that, there's really no maintenance to do to the pump at all.
Obviously, it's all self.
Yes, it's a self-containment.
Explain to me your comment that you said, I think you said you couldn't rewire the pump, you couldn't unwind, if you pulled the pump, something about the wiring?
It's, it's three phase wiring. Not a qualified electrician to wire it in.
So then anytime you change a pump, we have an expense of having an electrician come in?
Yeah. The, the pump company has trained people to do that. So we can, unlike Dan had asked prayer about the bills. If it's just to, to pull a pump up and inspect it, or if we think it's got a clog in it in the, any of the lift stations in town, we can do that. We can pull them up. We can take the, the bottom off the pump, clear the clog, stuff like that. We can, I can unwire the pump. If need be, if we know it's bad, but to wire it back in. I'm not a, I'm not a certified electrician.
Okay, thank you.
I wouldn't want to do that.
I don't want, I don't like three face.
No.
Especially four eighty three face.
Hurts for a minute.
Yes, yes, unless it burns you.
Right. Sorry.
And you have in this year's budget, you have the ability to pay for any of the three options, correct?
Yes, I do.
And do we have a plan in place for um, replacing the ones that are in existence that have not failed? Is there are we building that into our budget?
I try to make sure that there's enough money in the budget so that if I have pump failures at any place in the system, um, that I can pay for. That's part of my wastewater improvements. That's where that money all, all lies. Cause I actually had another, the same day that they pulled this one, they pulled another one at a, a little lift station. Because I needed them to check it electrically and, uh, they found that it was bad, but yet it was in my range to just tell them to go ahead and repair that. So, I'm, it was only like twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars to repair, so.
Yeah, you know what you spend on, on clearing?
Last year was pretty light, I think. I think I only had one or two that I had to, that were under, under the sixty percent is, you know, and that was, and that's just a number that when you go to the conferences and stuff like that, that's kind of where they tell you and recommend, you know, when you get to a certain point, you might as well just buy a new pump. And that's, so that's where the sixty percent comes from. So like I said, I think I only, only fixed two last year and I think they were rebuilt because they just had minor issues without looking for sure.
Based on hearing that, I don't think we could lean towards the two point two.
If, if that's what the council wants to do.
I'll make the most of the growth in bar.
The purchase and new?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dan, second by Ridge. Go with the bar. Council discussion. Public comment? Bailey, please.
Case man?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Fansman?
Yes.
Bobber?
Yes.
Crumb?
Yes.
Motion to approve replacement, uh, Ivara pump carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Four point nine, review and approve consent agenda pay request totally nine thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and eighty cents. There are four items here. I'll read all four. Council can make a motion that includes consent, which will bring all four up for discussion in a single vote. Or they can make a motion on any of the four agenda items. Item A from H R Green in the amount of five thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars five cents for the Ford and Huber sanitary sewer replacement projects. Item B from H R Green in the amount of one thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars, seventy-five cents for the animosa sidewalk program. Item C from H R Green in the amount of one thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars for engineering service, services, master service agreement. Item D from H R Green in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for the water treatment aerator project.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by Ridge, second by Kay. Council, any further discussion on any four of the items?
Hey, Jeremiah, number C. Is that service agreement, monthly contract?
Um, we pay that every month. I, yes, that's, uh, man, it, I think very slightly, but it's spread out over the term of the it's spread out over the term, so it does slightly vary.
So is there a a dollar amount for the year for a service contract?
I can find that out for you. Uh, it's, um, basically it includes any master services or agreements. So if there's anything that's covered as part of the uh, general engineering services, it will fall under there. If it's, can't remember what they term it, a special, uh, project or something else, it would fall into something else. So for example, they would do, um, reviewing of certain, um, uh, engineering agreements that are standard, but if it was, uh, we had to get them to do a site plan review on a new construction, that would be separate.
Do we ever give another firm a chance about?
Uh, we don't currently, just because they are, are contracted city engineer.
Thank you.
Good questions, comments? Public comment? Bailey?
Wymer?
Yes.
Fansman?
Yes.
Bobber?
Yes.
Crumb?
Yes.
Case man?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent carries. Five point zero, city administrators report.
Uh, just briefly, um, the last Thursday I attended a smaller communities forum. At the Hotel Kirkwood, event sponsored by the Corridor Business Journal and Kirkwood Community College. Um, I thought it was a positive event. I got to represent the city of Anamosa. Um, along with, uh, several other communities, uh, Soul and Tiff and Benton, Tipton, Robbins, West Liberty, Washington, as well as a few smaller communities, but they were suburbs, Hiawatha. Um, it, it was a good event. The collective response from all the panelists was, um, essentially just discussing the challenges and, um, some of the resource difficulties that are associated with running a small government. Um, it was a good, good attended event. Uh, the probably, I don't know, thirty tables or so of eight to ten people and it was packed full. So it was a good time.
Also any comments or questions for Jeremiah? Thanks for that report, Jeremiah. Six point zero, mayor council report, six point one mayor's report. I do not have any. Six point two, council reports. Seven point zero, public comment for items not on the agenda. Eight point zero adjournment, C D U's meeting is adjourned. Thanks everyone for taking time to come and to join us.